Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Hasslet Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, May 27, 2025. The time is 6:30 PM, and we do have a quorum present. This meeting is being held in person, and we do have attendees that have joined by teleconference or video conference as well. We do have a couple of citizens who filled out citizen participation cards this evening or sheets. They all are in reference to Agenda Item 5A, and I would like to hold those comments until we get to that agenda item. So we will call on you at that time. First item to present is we do have a couple of items of community interest. First one is that the Hasslet Fire and Rescue Fire Supports Kids' Fire Camp was going to be held on Saturday, June 7, and that's going to be from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And you can go to the link Kids' Fire Camp on the city website and get more information about registration and participation in that event. And then there's also going to be the Independence Day Celebration, and that's going to be on Friday, June 27. That'll take place at 6:00 PM at the Community Park, and that's a great celebration. And one other item, the screen behind us is not working this evening, so I'll turn your attention to the screen at the side of the room. That has all of the relevant information that we're going to be reviewing this evening as we go through the agenda. Next agenda item is to review and approve the meeting minutes from our last regular meeting. Any items, corrections for that?
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from last meeting with the change that Mr. Gatto was not at the meeting and did not vote in any of the measures.
Okay. Any other corrections that need to be recognized by anybody? No? Okay. There's a motion to approve the minutes as written with one amendment that Frank was absent.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on, Agenda Item 5A, Discuss/Consider an Act Regarding the Application of a Specific Use Permit (SUP) for a Vape and Gift Shop to be Located at 1099 Schoolhouse Road, Suite D, in an Existing Building Located in the GC Zoning. And we're going to begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Pretty much like you said, so I'm having to go off the screen as well. I don't have my material here in front of me. So we do have an application here for an SUP, a specific use permit for a smoke and vape shop that's going to be located at 1099 Schoolhouse Road, Suite D. This is an existing building in a general commercial zoning. The only way for a smoke or vape shop to come into that zoning is by way of a specific use permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And is the applicant present this evening? Is the applicant online this evening? Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, so this is an opportunity for anybody to speak for or against Agenda Item 5A. I'll call in the three individuals who were present in the room this evening, and then we do have a number of letters or emails that were received by the city. We'll recognize those in a minute. So the first person is Mr. Crawford.
Eric Crawford, 114 Brentwood Lane. We have a vape shop across the street from Harris Baptist Church, and our staff picks up their paraphernalia all over the highway all the time in our yard. Again, you already have one here. The crowd that that brings, stuff they're allowed to sell in there, I don't get that either. Not just vape stuff. Anyway, I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And Mr. Halsey.
Thank you, Chair of the Commissions, representing the City of Hasslet. I'm Mr. Halsey, 101 Main Street, Hasslet, Texas. The specific use permit being requested, there are sufficient places for that type of product already in the city limits of Hasslet, Texas, but I would make a note that in my due diligence, do diligence in keeping with the desires of the people of the city of Hasslet. There is a widespread desire, but this is not in the city. I urge you to disapprove this specific use permit.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And last person in the room who filled out a comment card was Mr. Taylor, if you wish to speak for or against.
Okay. I urge you not to...
Could you state your name and address for us, please?
Oh, I'm James Taylor. I live on Rocky Face Lane. I'm out of the city limit. I live at the Tendere Ranch. But we already have a vape shop in the area. It's not good for the kids. I urge you to disallow it. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And the city has also received a total of 44 emails from residents expressing that they are opposed to the SUP being approved. Four of those residents requested that their comments be read into the record, which I will do at this time. First resident was, let's see, I don't know that I have the full name. I'm sorry, Laura Slaughter? Okay. I will attempt to get these names as correct as possible. But she lives at 1195 Wild Senate Way. Please read my comment in the P&amp;Z hearings for both the vape shop permit and the batch plant permit. I do not want P&amp;Z to grant the permit for the vape shop. We know this is a harmful addiction. I do not want the batch plant installed at Sweetgrass. I live next door to Caraway, so chances of dust will blow my way. Next one is from Patricia Parker. She states, please read this letter into the public hearing as of the agenda item on May 27, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and during the agenda public hearing. I am writing this letter to oppose the approval of a specific use permit for the vape shop on Schoolhouse Road. We do not need another vape shop catering to our children in this community. I urge you to please consider the direction of this permit. The next one is from Joette Keen. She states, I strongly oppose the approval of the specific use permit for the vape shop. I believe this is an unnecessary and, in my opinion, a harmful addiction or addition to the business in Hasslet. There is no value to Hasslet residents for items that introduce health risks such as products sold in these types of venues. Please inform P&amp;Z of my opposition during the public hearing of this agenda item on May 27. Also, if I'm unable to attend, please have it read into the record. Next one is from Marilyn Broyles. She states, please read this at the May 27 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I am requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission turn down the request for a specific use permit for a vape shop at 1099 Schoolhouse Road. This does not enhance our family-oriented community. Vape shops and smoke shops target our children, whether they are high school or middle age. Hasslet already has a smoke shop open 24 hours a day that supplies the citizens of Hasslet and attracts young people from surrounding areas. These types of businesses are not what the citizens desired. When they moved to Hasslet, a vape shop opens the door to many types of paraphernalia being sold, which can already be found in the current smoke shop on Highway 156. It is interesting that they are calling it a vape and gift shop. Not sure what types of gifts you would buy at a vape shop, and can only assume the gift shop was added to make it more palatable. And then, as I stated, there were 40 additional emails that the city had received, all expressing opposition to Agenda Item 5A. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and we will move it to discussion or action. If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I would make a motion to recommend to City Council that we deny the application for a specific use permit for a vape and gift shop to be located at 1099 Schoolhouse Road, Suite D, in an Existing Building Located in the GC Zoning.
Okay, there's been a motion to recommend denial of the SUP. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion's been seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, Agenda Item 6B, Hold a Public Hearing/Discuss/Consider an Act on a Request for Approval of a Specific Use Permit for a Temporary Batch Plant in the Sweetgrass Subdivision Phase II on the north side of Greenbrier Road, approximately 300 feet north of the intersection of Cedarwood Court. The subject property is in the Residential Plan Development PD Zoning District. And we're going to begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you again, Chairman, members of the commission. So this is another specific use permit for a concrete batch plant. It was being proposed to be built on-site to finish the roads in Sweetgrass. Traditionally, it's better for a batch plant to come in so we're not having all the concrete trucks travel up and down our city thoroughfares. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, we have to go to public hearing before that. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5B? And I will remind our city staff that we did have the comment that was received via email, that there was one person expressing opposition to that. Anyone in the room wishing to speak for or against? Or online? Okay, recognizing no one came forward or spoke up online, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move to discussion and consideration and act. Inside the SUP, does it have a date that that batch plant will be removed? I apologize.
I spoke with the applicant, and there was no date per se, but there was a timeframe. He said they would be in and out in about two months after they assemble.
And in other instances where we approved an SUP like this, we were clear that the batch plant could not be used for the purposes of producing materials that were carried off-site. And will that be, will there be restrictions like that?
I think if you made that motion, then we can make sure that's carried forward.
Okay, so that's not currently in any of the documentation under the SOP, that they haven't declared that themselves or anything, correct?
I have not read anything like that. No, sir.
Are they primarily used as a...
I can jump in. I'm Jeremy Page. I'm the city attorney, if I haven't met all of you yet. I helped Mike draft these ordinances. And so for your first question, the timeline, because this is just going to be a temporary allowed use, it is going to be 90 days. That is what we have in the ordinance. As to your second question about the onsite versus offsite, that's not currently in the ordinance. So that would be something that could be proposed in a motion tonight to be added to the ordinance, to be sent to the council for their final decision.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Appreciate the comment. Any other questions?
No, I just, so is it going to be primarily just road construction?
Correct.
This is not foundation work?
This is just the roads. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Also, what are the time limitations on it? No, as far as time of day?
Hours of operation?
Yeah, so right now, we do have on our code ordinances, the time for construction, which is 30 minutes prior to sunup and 30 minutes prior or after sundown. So that's our times of construction and no Sundays.
So it needs to be, correct? No carryoff material?
Yeah, no production for offsite use.
But it can't take it off site.
And if somebody were just to make, add that to the comment. No, it's already in there. Yeah, it's already in there.
I'll make a recommendation that we, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the temporary batch plant. Approval to City Council, Temporary Batch Plant, Specific Use Permit for Temporary Batch Plant in the Sweetgrass Subdivision Phase II.
We need to add no production of...
I don't think we need to, I think...
You need to.
That we need, I thought that was in the ordinance.
Is there a second of that motion? Okay, that motion dies. Is there another motion?
We've approved batch plants many times.
I'd like to make a motion to City Council for the approval, recommend the approval of the special use permit for temporary batch plant in the Sweetgrass Subdivision Phase II on the north side of Greenbrier Road as per 5B on the agenda, and to also add that no production or offsite materials...
For offsite use.
For offsite use, which should also be added to our, in our ordinance.
Okay, there's a motion to recommend a City Council approval of the SUP for the batch plant as expressed in Agenda Items 5B with the additional comment that no materials may, or no production can be used or created for offsite use. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion been seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, Agenda Item 5C.
Well, that's the same thing, so.
Yep, just similar. Hold a public hearing, Discuss/Consider an Act on a Request for Approval of a Specific Use Permit for a Temporary Batch Plant in the North Glenn Subdivision Phase III. The plant will be located on a 39-acre tract in Rightly James Survey, Abstract 1268, Track 4B of the North Glenn Phase III Edition, located in the city of Hasslet, just southwest of Block H, Lot 14. The subject property is in the Residential R2 Zoning District. We'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you again, Chairman, members of the commission. So this is pretty much identical to the previous item, just a different location, being the North Glenn Subdivision for the construction of their streets in Phase III. They will be erecting the batch plant just 250 feet south of the intersection, Blue Mountain Road East and Birchwood. And any questions? I'll be happy to entertain.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5C?
I have a question. I live in the Ashmore Farms community.
Sir, if you would, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Guillermo Martinez, and I live in 329 Arbor Lane in the Ashmore Farms community. And the letter I received stated that the plant is going to be within 150 feet from my residence. And, you know, I look into it, and I read that in other cities surrounding our area, the minimum is 300 feet, and it goes from 300 to the maximum is 600. So I wonder why, why would it be allowed to be 150 for many residents?
So we'll thank you for your question. Any other comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 5C? Okay, recognizing nobody else came forward, we'll close the public hearing. We'll open it up to discussion, consideration, and action. Anything that you can respond to as far as required distances for a temporary batch plant?
Yeah, in this particular instance, the batch plant is going to be at least 300 feet away because it's 250 foot south of the road, the intersection, plus the width of the right of way is approximately 80 feet, so that's 330 feet.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Any other...
So we see, I didn't understand where he lived. Is he talking about separation across Blue Mountain or 156?
Blue Mountain.
Separation to any resident.
Yeah, he lives in Ashmore Farms on Arbor Lane.
So...
His backyard will be looking.
I know, but Maurice just said it's going to be south of. So it's going to be south of that 250 feet?
Yeah, if you look at the map, if you look at the map, there's a distance that's 250 foot south of the intersection, but the width of the right of way is at least 80 foot through that area.
Okay, so we're 330 feet.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Page, maybe you can answer a similar question that we had in 5B. Is the timeframe on this batch plant similar to 90 days?
Yes, this is 90 days, but just like the other ordinance, there also, there's not any current requirement about onsite versus offsite use of the batch plant. So if that is a restriction that you are willing to recommend for this item as well, I would say you need to add that to a motion, just as you did for Item 5.5. B.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Page.
I have another question. So if, for some reason, construction's not complete on the roads in there within 90 days, then would they have to come back to us for an extension?
Yes, they would.
They would.
Yep. Any other questions?
I have one question. As far as the placement of this plant, I know you said it couldn't even be further, but is the terrain limited because of the hill that's there? Does that factor into where it has to be placed?
I'm not sure of the reasoning by this location that they picked.
Yeah, I would be, I live in North Glenn, so I'd be surprised if the hill had any effect, because if you look at the square box next to it, the hill's kind of more towards the center there. So as far as it being placement there, it could be strategic for them as far as the best thing. Could it move somewhere else? Potentially, I will say with this caveat, I live in North Glenn, so I don't want to do any run afoul of any conflict of interest, but just to answer your question, I don't think the hill would have any impact on that.
Yeah, if I was taking deliveries of stone and sand and other materials, why not get as close to the road as possible, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion? And remembering onsite or offsite usage, if that's...
I have another question of Mike. So, yes, so as far as delivery of materials, are they limited to bring that in off of 156? Or can they bring it on Blue Mountain, all of that? That's a pretty heavy truck. I was 1800 hauling the stone, rock, cement.
I don't know where they would enter off of Blue Mountain Road. I mean, there's a little entryway right there, but I would assume they'd be coming through off of 156 and coming down Wimberley and...
No, no. So they're going to come in through, through Blue Mountain Road. If you look where the blue line is, they have already made gravel where they can come in and out themselves. So I'm pretty sure that's where they're going to come. They're not going to, I'd be surprised, because they can't come through 156 because there's no road right now that they've made from the development to get to there. That's all dirt. So the only way they can get, and that's probably right when he says strategic by the road, where they have it placed is right where that kind of gravel entrance is. And I think that's going to be the main, the entrance into the development from Blue Mountain Road they're going to create like they did from 156. I would imagine those trucks have to come in from Blue Mountain Road to get in there, not through 1. Now, they might come from 156 to Blue Mountain Road.
Sure.
But they have to get in there from Blue Mountain.
Right. Yeah, he's not going to do anything to compromise its existing road, so he's not going to...
It would make more sense to come off of Blue Mountain onto the gravel area.
It would make more sense. I'm just concerned with just...
Okay, I do have a question. I live in that neighborhood as well. And once they connect these roads, we're going to start seeing trucks going through all here because that's going to be a problem. I mean, there's only really one way in and one way out right now. And so there'll be a lot of extra traffic. It's already a mess as it is right now with all the extra traffic. We're going to add trucks to it with gravel and everything. So is there a way we can limit that? I don't mind going back and forth to Blue Mountain, but I keep thinking Wimberley's already a pretty crowded road as it is, or the other roads.
Are we just talking about the, to support this batch plant?
Yeah, once they connect, because at some point, they'll connect us. I mean, can we, can we say, don't, you know, don't drive through the existing roads? I guess we really can, or can we? I'm just asking the question.
I will make that a point that I talked to, when I talked to the applicant, that we, if we can try to get everything off of Blue Mountain Road onto that, that closest entry to the batch plant, that would be more ideal than coming down the paved streets in the subdivision.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Can you again?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of this specific use permit for a temporary batch plant in the North Glenn Subdivision Phase III, plant located on the 39-acre tract in the Riley James Survey, Abstract 1268, Track 4B of the North Glenn Phase III Edition, located in the city of Hasslet, just southwest of Block H, Lot 14. Yeah, with the, with the provision that it produces no material for use offsite.
Okay, there's a motion to recommend approval to City Council with the addition that no materials are produced for offsite use.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? There's a second. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, Agenda Item 6. That's the status of current development projects. There is an exhibit in our packet to brief you on that. And the next agenda item is our legislative briefing, and I will call Mr. Our Mayor, Mr. Halsey, to walk us through some legislative updates.
Thank you, Chair of the Commissions. You have the packet in front of you. There's much more material. We're not going to go through all of this. This is for informational and for your own pleasure to read. At your convenience, I will, as you open it up, this first set right here where it's highlighted, these are all bills. There's 40 of them that are, have, will have direct effect on planning and zoning, very specific to municipalities such as Hasslet or other type cities of different populations. And that, you can go in and just Google that bill. It'll give you more, but there is a caption in each one as to what it addresses. Now, these, none of these bills here have been approved as this is, as of 2025, or excuse me, the May 25, 2025, the status of them. They're, the next package that is clipped is the bills, all the bills out of the 89th Legislature that are, have been signed by the governor or filed without the governor's signature. What does that mean? The governor has a time limit of 10 days to sign a bill or disapprove it when it's laid on his desk. If he does not act, that means approve or disapprove, it automatically becomes law. So that is that list right here. The next package, these are from, these are just updates current as of May 23. Again, for your viewing pleasure, the most current one that was available is May 23, and it goes back week by week for the last four weeks and gives you a caption of what these bills were. So if, for review, you might, with regard to planning and zoning, and municipality-specific, is the first set that's in there. This time next month, we'll have a definitive list of planning and zoning items for you that were, had become law, and when they will go into effect. Most of them will be, can be either immediately or September 1. Nonetheless, that'll be available at your next planning and zoning meeting. 89th Legislature ends June 2. Unless there's a special session called, but I would doubt that.
So based on your years of experience sitting in the role of mayor for the city of Hasslet, would you say this legislative session has been more active with legislative motions and bills and...
Yes, by far. There was over 5,000 submitted legislative here. There was over 5,000 submitted legislative year, as last year, or the 88th legislature, neighborhood of 3,000. What we did note is that it was very active in to centralize municipal control in Austin, in taking away as many local control-type aspects from local governments. And that's, some of the bills are based on population, but across the board, it was taking authority away from the local government. And hopefully, that stuff is minimized, but we will have a list for you next month as to what those bills are.
And do you believe at that time, we will also have to update some of our processes and some of our ordinances to reflect that?
We will have to change ordinances to comply, yes. I will say this, several months ago, Channel A came out, and they interviewed, they were interviewing different mayors of small towns, and I was, Hasslet was one of those, and of course, they were looking at 156 and around, and all of development around. And the reporter asked, "Mr. Halsey, what is, what do you view as your biggest challenge this year?" I said, "The 89th legislature." That's our biggest challenge. So we'll keep you entertained.
All right, thank you for the update. Appreciate the information you've shared with us this evening.
Do we have anybody that lobbies on our behalf at the legislature? Our attorneys or anybody?
No, we do not have an active lobbyist. And what we did, what we do have, I have a, an assistant, that this is all this person does, is monitor these bills. We have submitted approximately 200 letters to state legislators, as well as state senators, describing, you know, giving very specific bills, whether they are Senate bill or a House bill, and gave very specific write-up as to how this negatively affects municipalities. And we also sent every one of them to our state legislator, Nate Shatzline, as well our state senator, Doc Donit. Very good. So we've been very active this legislative year with regards to the city making its voice known. We have spoken to many of these legislators and senators, not directly, we'll speak to their district directors, and their district director will report directly to the representative or senator. So it's been a good conversation, and we're not the lone small city, but there are very, very few small cities that want to have effort to let their voice be known. So, Hasslet, Texas has.
All right, well, thank you again for your efforts in keeping us informed of what's happening in Austin. Appreciate you doing that. All right, moving on, Agenda Item 7, which is, I'm sorry, 8, which is executive session we do not need. And then we have a discussion or take action on anything from the executive session, which also we don't need this evening, and then Agenda Item 10, anything that we need to know about future agenda items, anything that we want to plan from a workshop standpoint?
Not necessarily from a workshop, but we will have several plans and site plans that'll be coming forward.
In the next, next meeting?
Should, yes.
Okay. All right. Any workshop items, Mr. Mayor, that you feel like we should start? All right, perfect. All right, and that brings us to Agenda Item 11. We are adjourned, and the time is 7:02 PM, according to the clock on the wall. Thank you. Thank you for coming and participating this evening. All right, so, I want to keep that. I don't want to keep that.